Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order our city council meeting for today, Monday, April 9th, 2018. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sylvia Rolcall?
Mayor Mace.
Here.
Council President Garland.
Here.
Council Kuiper.
Here.
Council Young.
Here.
Council Brous.
Here.
Council Griffin.
Here.
Council Rosner.
Here.
Thank you.
Joe.
Mayor and Council. I want to at least start tonight's meeting with a little bit of background. I think it's important to note, next Tuesday night, you still have on your agenda the resolution to ask for a UGB expansion. The smaller ask was the direction of this council. So staff has been proceeding in that pattern to be bringing that to your decision next week. However, as many in the room know, the school district last week, the school board took an action on Wednesday night and basically in a five-zero vote, asked you to consider withdrawing your letter of interest and essentially to stop this process for a UGB expansion. And that's why we are here tonight. I don't want my staff doing any more work until this council gives us some clear direction in response to the school district's request. So that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. That meeting was called by me, just for clarity. It was not called by any of the city council members, and that is my discretion as city manager. We need direction from you. And I think the community wants to hear how are you going to respond in terms of the school district's request. So that's essentially why we're here tonight. And I know you have people that want to testify, but we're hoping for a decision, one way or the other, so we can proceed to prepare for next week. So with that...
Before we receive citizen comment, public testimony on the proposed resolution. Questions for Joe? Man? Chime in? Okay. Is that a yes?
No.
Okay. Then, thank you, Joe. So now we will, unless there's objection, we will let folks give testimony about the proposed resolution. Great. So first is Doug Scott.
Doug Scott, 228-62-Southwest Saunders Drive. I testified about this subject last week at last week's meeting, so I won't repeat my whole testimony for you guys again. But I did want to reiterate that I'm encouraging or asking council, I guess, to withdraw the application for the UGB expansion. Originally a proponent of it, as I've looked more and more into it as this process has gone on, my mind has changed and am now opposed to the ask at this time. Just quickly highlighting my reasons. A, it feels very rushed. We're doing, pushing through a housing needs analysis out of order with a typical order that that would be done as part of our comprehensive plan update, which also hasn't been done, community visioning, which hasn't yet been done, making sure we have the right infrastructure, schools, and other things in place, utilities and other things in place to support a UGB expansion. And this is the only, as we all know, this is the only chance we have really to say how fast Sherwood grows. Once that property or any property is inside the UGB, then it's really out of the control of the council and anyone else in the city. The property owners then have control if they have enough majority or unanimous consent among contiguous property owners, they can force annexation to the city and then development. So this is the only chance we get to slow the process. We have another chance in three years and another one in six years, and that feels adequate to me, given the buildable land that's available in Brookman that is just now starting to develop. And then with this new information from the school district, I just, that makes it that much more clear to me that this is the right decision would be to withdraw at this time. One of the reasons that Sherwood is such a desirable place to live is the quality of our schools. It's one of the top 10 districts in the state, maybe top five. I certainly have three kids in it and am very, very happy with the school district. And I think opening up this kind of expansion with the school not being able to keep pace as far as adequate buildings, adequate facilities to house the potential influx of new people would be potentially a disaster for our school system, which is one of the hallmarks of Sherwood, and that weighs very, very heavily on me and hopefully as well on all of you, as I'm sure it does. So with that, I'll see the rest of my time. But again, I'm asking for a withdrawal of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next is Kelly Ritz. Welcome, Kelly.
Do I need to give my address?
Yes, that would be preferred.
Kelly Ritz, 15811 Holly Hill Road, Hillsborough, Oregon. I am the president of Stonebridge Homes and the president of Venture Properties. We are currently building homes in the Mandel Farms development. I think I've built in three or four neighborhoods over probably the past 10 to 15 years in Sherwood. Not a huge builder of homes here, but we have done so over a period of time. I've also been involved through Venture Properties with property owners in the Sherwood West planning area. And I think I am here to vote or to impress upon the council that I think that they should continue with the ask to Metro. And I think that's for a couple different reasons. I've been involved, at least from the outside, in some other expansion areas. I'll be building homes in the South Hillsborough expansion area, which probably took 12 years. I think it's going on its 12th year, maybe, and there'll finally be some homes. I know some homes are finally starting there. And one of the reasons, my main reasons, that I think the city should continue with the ask is the urban growth boundary and land use planning only works if we plan. And it only, and it takes a very long period of time. And I can tell you, as a business that purchases land and develops land and builds houses, that one of the main reasons that the housing prices are going up, and it's, there's a variety of reasons, but it's the scarcity of land and it drives prices up. So it is imperative that we keep enough land that's planned well but readily available so that we don't have land scarcity and that we have the ability to provide housing. And every jurisdiction, whether it's a city of Sherwood or it's Hillsborough or it's Lake Oswego, they all, you know, everybody's bought into the urban growth boundary. And with that goes the responsibility of planning and making sure that there's a, by state statute, that there's a reasonable amount of land inside the boundary to provide for housing. So I guess I'll just finish up by saying, I think we need to plan well. I think that the process that Sherwood has already gone through with the Sherwood West expansion and all the work that went in behind it, as well as the ask to Metro, there's so many hoops that have to be jumped through and so much time that it takes. And don't, and I would say, don't look at the ask to Metro is the end-all. It's just the first step. So again, I would say I think you should go forward with the expansion.
Thank you, Kelly. Robert Babcock? Welcome, Robert.
My, excuse me. My neighbor Kennedy Hawkins has asked that he be, he share these views that I'm expressing this evening. He and our families live on Haiti Road within a few hundred yards of, to the north of the high school. And both of our properties were included in the original letter in December to Metro. Kennedy and I are puzzled. There's a lot of money and a lot of thought was invested in the process leading to the proposal in December. And I've read that, gone through it, and I think the city's staff, and especially the advisory committee, some of whom I think are here tonight, performed extraordinary service and deserve commendation. What Kennedy and I don't understand is why the school board's recently expressed concerns should be permitted to outweigh that thoughtful study of the issues that will ultimately determine Sherwood's growth and demographics. I think I understand the rules correctly. I mean, even if all 600-plus acres that were requested of the Metro were approved by Metro, that doesn't determine the property's development. I mean, we're talking years, as the previous speaker indicated, that during which the city's going to have its full planning and zoning responsibilities. But what we do know is that whatever land might be included by Metro in three years, assuming the withdrawal pursuant to this resolution, is going to be lots less, more severely circumscribed by the standards of a maximum of, I think it's 900 acres in the entire metropolitan area. And you're going to be shifting from yourselves to Metro. A large part of the responsibilities for determining Sherwood's growth. And I just don't understand why the council would want to tie its own hands while they still have time through the planning and zoning process and the years that go by before delivery, development would commence. Why you'd want to do that? I mean, were I sitting in your shoes, and I speak for Kennedy on this also, we'd seek the broadest inclusion from now available from Metro and use the years before the beginning of any development to refine the planning and zoning needed to assure that the best of all possible outcomes can be achieved. We would certainly not bind the city to whatever Metro might do with the various limitations in three years, and I think that would be the effect of this resolution. Thank you. I do have, probably for, more for Kennedy's sake than my own, but copies of the statement, one for the recorder and one for each of you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, give those to the recorder.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Robert. Jamie Stasny? Welcome.
Hi. Jamie Stasny, 17933 Northwest Evergreen Parkway. I'm going to say some of this for the record, although I've spoken with most of you a couple of times, I think probably made some of these points to you in meetings. So I work for a company called Metropolitan Land Group, been involved in the community for a number of years, was on the stakeholder work group for Sherwood West Planning, and am very invested in the future of the community because I also live just outside the community and my family and I hang out here. So that all being said, I think you all know I'm in support of the city seeking an urban growth boundary in 2018. I think the points that the previous testifier made were really important. I think that the mid-cycle process is not going to be a good process for Sherwood to go through. I shared some information with some of the counselors about what the criteria are going to be in the mid-cycle, and they're much more onerous than the regular cycle. So I think there's some pressure right now building because of the housing shortage, and I think there could be a good opportunity for Sherwood to move forward in the near future. Many of you also know that we happen to own a property on Haiti Road that was condemned by the school district. And the condemnation proceedings got pretty ugly and shared my perspective with some of you. It's been really hard, and we've been trying, I specifically have been trying really hard to bring the parties together to talk about how we can partner and move forward together. We own around 100 acres near the new high school site. We're going to be invested and involved in the community for many years to come, and I think there's an opportunity right now for us to partner together to be able to figure out some solutions to the concerns that the school district has. They've made it clear they're concerned about capacity, about development outpacing their enrollment capabilities. And I think there are many things that we can do in order to accommodate them, to make sure that doesn't happen. But the frustrating part has been, we haven't been able to have that conversation. And I know some of you shared support for us having a meeting to discuss some of those things, and I think that is still prudent. I think that would be a very good faith effort for all of us to make, to come to the table. The school district has made it clear they're not comfortable being in a meeting when we're there. So what we would like to recommend and what is being proposed right now is a meeting between the Home Builders Association, the city, and the school district to sit down and talk about the broader implications of withdrawing the application at this point in time. And what I would like to ask of all of you respectfully is for a delay in you making a decision. I'd like you to keep the decision date next Tuesday, as you already have planned. Allow us the opportunity to continue to try to have this conversation. I think there's a lot of things, as I said, that we can do together, and I think there could be a huge missed opportunity if we don't do that now. Just say a couple of those. The infrastructure required to support the high school is massive. The costs of that are extensive. Those costs could be offset by adding rooftops and residential development and commercial development in the expansion area. I think that's something that should be considered. And if they're not going to move forward with partnering with us and spreading those costs, I'd like to know what their plan is to pay for those. They're extremely expensive, so it'd be good to have that plan and have that conversation, which hasn't occurred either. There are other things that the development community and the property owners in Sherwood West could do to help offset those concerns and those costs, but we need to have that conversation. So thank you so much for your time, all of you, not just tonight, but all the meetings and conversations that we've had over the past months, and thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Jean Simpson? Welcome, Jean.
Other side of the table. Jean Simpson, 22466 Southwest Nottingham Court. I spent more time this weekend preparing for tomorrow night than I did tonight, and I have my notes on here, so they're a little scrambled. I am in support of your resolution 2018-34 withdrawing the letter of interest for multiple reasons. As one of the previous people testified, it only works if we plan well. And I believe that we, as a city, have done some preliminary planning, but not enough for us to have all the right answers to do an ask at this time. Staff has been under a lot of pressure to hurry through a housing needs analysis, but I think an economic analysis is just as important to combine those two pieces of information so that we do a complete comprehensive plan and so that we understand the right mix in the Sherwood West area. It's currently got a lot of community involvement in Sherwood West to do a lot of residential, but those of us that were here back in the 90s know that residential land only or highly weighted residential land in our community is unsustainable. We don't have enough funds in tax base to be able to support residential mix only. And I think without an economic analysis and understanding what our mix in Sherwood West should be, we may be getting ourselves in the same situation we were in the 90s and early 2000 without enough of a tax base. Again, the housing needs analysis rushed and out of order. An economic analysis was done during the Sherwood West process but not updated for this process. There are some other key factors that the timing, I think, is in a, just, we're just a little rushed, and we shouldn't be running through this project with our hair on fire. Brookman Road is just starting to develop. We haven't seen all that happen, and so we have some, I think, breathing room to allow that to happen and still have residential land available for a little bit of development in the next three to six years. The widening of Twalton Sherwood Road will be occurring in the next three to five years. If we allow that to happen, allow the school to develop and allow our community, and this is my biggest point, the delay in the UGB expansion, as staff has stated, will allow the city of Sherwood to complete the update of the vision for the community and allow the comprehensive plan update to be done so that we can see as a community where we're going to grow responsibly. And again, our plan only works if we plan well, and I think doing it rationally, calmly, and in a proper order will ensure that our community will grow successfully in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Gerald Milner? Welcome.
My name's Gerard Milner. I live at 4985 Southwest Laurelwood Avenue in Beaverton. I'm a professor at Portland State University. I had taught in an urban planning program for 16 years and have taught in the business school for the last 11 years. I have a PhD in economics. I study housing markets. I became interested in this broader issue about Portland's urban growth boundary many years, many years ago. Since 1980, the popular, I think the reason we're in this problem is because our population growth is, has outstripped our land supply. Since 1980, the four-county population has grown by 78%, and Portland's urban growth boundary has only grown by 10%. For my money, I think some of the things that Metro has done to not expand the urban growth boundary have not been entirely legitimate. There's, they're counting a lot of excess housing capacity in their 20-year land supply in the East County part of Portland that are very unlikely to develop at the densities that the zoning would allow. Portland, City Portland, has very generous zoning along its arterials. And so as part of their 20-year land supply, a lot of that zoning capacity is, has been included in urban growth boundary. So knowing that there was going to be this period of urban growth boundary expansion proposals being considered this year, I had my students study all of the urban reserves in my housing economics class last year. And this year, I'm having them study the five proposals that are at least appearing to move forward. And I was very pleased to see that Sherwood and the other four cities had put proposals together for urban growth boundary expansions. Most of that 10% of increase in land supply that Metro approved was in the Damascus area, which all of us know or should know that was a complete failure. The city of Damascus was a place where the housing markets weren't very strong, where the local residents didn't want to see themselves be urbanized, and where the terrain didn't allow for easy development of infrastructure. I think the five urban reserve proposals that have been put on the table, Beaverton, King City, Sherwood, Wilsonville, and Beaverton are all quite amenable to subdivision development. As explained earlier, this is going to take a while. It's going to take a while. I think the estimates that Hillsborough applies to some of their research has been something in the order of about six to eight years before you actually see roofs on the ground. I think that the advantage to having as much expansion as possible in this go-around will be to take some heat off the land market. Right now, landowners can say to themselves, my property's only going up in value, why do I need to sell to a developer today? If, on the other hand, we change that dynamic and add a lot of land to urban growth boundary this year, I think that will make the, change that psychology amongst the landowners. So I don't know all of the issues involved with your school district. You've got a nice site to put a high school in. You've got a nice site to put in a lot of homes, and I would encourage you to approve the, or let the process go forward so that we can. And I would say that if you, if you don't, there isn't, there isn't a guarantee that the urban growth boundary won't be expanded by Metro. I mean, a lot of the rethinking that they're doing about the capacity of the existing urban growth boundary could have fairly traumatic impacts. I mean, my guess is that we're probably 50,000 housing units short from the Great Recession. To get that many housing units built would require an expansion, actually much larger than the five cities proposal. So you may get, you may get the UGB expanded on your doorstep, even if you turn, even if you decide not to go forward and take the lead in planning for the urban reserve.
Thank you, Gerard. Troy Casby? Welcome, Troy.
Troy Casby. I brought some technology here, not sure if it's going to work. I had a little PowerPoint so I could talk through things. And I can't find my mouse. I'll talk while I'm trying to get this going. My family and I have, we moved into Sherwood in January of 2003. We have four kids, and we've actually, so we've been here over 15 years. During that time, actually, job change and such, we decided, hey, let's downsize and find something a little more affordable, so we moved to Newburgh. And one year later, we came back to Sherwood. So point is, we love Sherwood. And here's my... And... Okay. So the point is, I can't see our slide.
We've got it all on our...
Oh, you got it? Oh, cool. Okay. So we love Sherwood. And to note that I'm currently not part of the UGB expansion, the ask, so my property is not in that, but I am for the expansion and I'm for the expansion now. There's a couple of points that I think are very important and kind of for me and my family and may speak for other families within the community. I believe the community around the high school, the new high school, there is a key point that there, we need to develop a community around the high school. The high school right now, as it stands, is moving forward. It's going to sit, you know, bordering 99 and a county road of Elworth, and there's no community around it. For myself and my family, my son plays soccer for Sherwood High School. And during the summer with the camp, they've got camp from 11 to 2, and he can ride his bike, he can run to practice. The current high school where it sits, kind of the, the community that it is and around it is kind of what makes Sherwood, and we love that. And so I, you know, the new high school, we need to have that same feel and that same community of what that is and kind of noting, hey, it's, there's homes, there's sidewalks, there's parks around the school. And really important is the safety and convenience to and from school. And so as it stands now, the high school's moving forward, but where will, where will we be 10 years from now? And I think that's an important thing that you guys need to think about. The decisions you make now are not just affecting what happens next year, but this is a long-range plan and what happens. So I have a younger son, and in 10 years, he could be playing high school soccer. And as it stands, in 10 years, going to that high school, it's going to be the same as it is when we opened, was it fall of 19, fall of '20, with no homes around it and kind of, there's no, no community there. And that's kind of, I don't know, kind of scary and disturbing for me. I'm not, as a parent, I'm not going to send my kid on a bike or run down a county road to get to high school. So that's... Technology. Yeah. So, so I think that's, for me, that's a huge, the huge thing and the huge problem is around the community and having no community around the high school. That's why I believe that prioritizing expansion, the expansion now, will help move that forward and develop that. And I believe that kind of kicking the can down the road is not going to solve the problem. I think it probably creates more problems. And I guess the need to get on this now and plan and get it done, I understand there's issues... there's issues, but that's what deadlines are for and deadlines produce results. So, I know in the private sector, when there's things to do, you have a deadline, you know, work these out and move forward for the sake of kids in 10 years from now.
Great. Thanks, Troy. Welcome, Barbara.
I'm speaking. And I have prepared remarks, but I think that there were a lot of other knowledgeable people that came before me. And I did a very crude little picture of, we live at 21615 Southwest Elworth Road and our property was included in, in the original proposal. We run a, we have a small, we've lived there 35 years and we have a small horse farm and boarding facility. And this is a picture I ran across that was looked out from our deck across 10 years ago, of which now is the Laurel and Andy Eady Ridge or whatever it's called, school and, and all the houses and the D.R. Horton and everything. So it's built up clear to the road there. And I just have some great concerns about the, the way the development is going to happen. Our road is an absolute hazard. And so a lot of thought needs to be put into that. And Troy is right. Kids need to be able to walk to school, to bike to school, and not always be busder-driven. And there is just not a safe way for that to happen, for kids that don't live, live in the housing developments there. So that's, you know, there are major safety concerns, major traffic concerns. And we love Sherwood, too. And we've, we're a mature couple and we would still like to stay in the Sherwood area. We love it. We've seen such growth here and such change, but we've adjusted to that as well. And I guess that the biggest thing for me is I don't want you to make a hasty decision. I, at the very least, postpone your decision until the planned April 17 meeting. I think there's a lot to consider. There are a lot of people involved and, and that's just all I'm going to say is I would really ask you to postpone any decision on this.
Thank you, Barbara. Diane Matthews? Welcome, Diane.
Nice to see everybody again. So I am Diane Mandel Matthews and I'm here representing myself, my sister, and my husband. And so I don't want to reiterate a number of things, and I was fortunate enough, and I want to thank each and every one of you except Mayor Mays. We did not have an opportunity to speak with you. So I don't want you to feel left out because you, too, will have an opportunity at some point.
You bet. I look forward to it.
But due to the hastiness of kind of the, the speeding up of the decision from the original April 17th to tonight, we just didn't have an opportunity to meet with everybody. But what I will say is thank you for all of you that were able to make time in your schedule. We realize this is a volunteer-type position and you all have lives of your own. But we spent a lot of time talking about kind of like what some of the concerns and issues are. And what I would like to do is just take a moment to maybe frame things up with maybe some possible solutions versus just problems, okay? Because I think with any problem, you need a solution. So I would like to ask council to consider the significant existing affordability issue across the city's existing and new residential neighborhoods. And instead of withdrawing the December letter with no further comment, simply amend the letter to request the modified expansions that reduces the expansion to the area that includes a sanitary modification area. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. That includes the sanitary sewer drain each basin, which we, which would be served by the district's future pump station. That modification would be a win-win to all the parties at the table. Because this really does come back, and I know I've got a limited amount of time, but it really does come back to how are we going to afford all this infrastructure if the school is choosing to take the infrastructure responsibility on their own? Which is basically my understanding from the letter that they sent over on Wednesday or Thursday or whenever it was. So the taxpayers certainly can't afford all that. So that, that's a concern. The other thing is Metro needs to see the city's falling through on its earlier efforts to increase affordable housing and in the future provide well-planned neighbors supporting, neighborhoods supporting the new high school. The district will be able to form a reimbursement district and should be able to recoup their extra costs, capacity costs for installing the pump station and extending street sewer water storm improvements into Sherwood West. The district will have time to amend its facilities, planning, planning efforts to reflect the growth expected in between seven and 10 years from Sherwood West and be encouraged to include Sherwood West in all future planning. Because it's already been testified that just because the land comes in doesn't mean it's going to be developed tomorrow. And the city does control the pace at what, how the development proceeds. Residents inside the city and around the community will be the first major, this will be the first major concept plan created and implemented by the city and be gradually and responsibly developed and with affordable housing. I mean, we spent a lot of time planning, and I know it's a preliminary conceptual plan, but there was a lot of tax dollars and a lot of resources that were used. Not only city resources, but community involvement resources. And let's not throw that all away. Let's like kind of build upon it. And, you know, property owners inside Sherwood West will ultimately see some of the future benefits for their investment in the time, the money, and the community. And I think that is so important, too. And I mentioned this and we all talked about this at different times individually. But the, the city outside of Sher, the Sherwood West citizens are not part of the city, and I'll wrap up, are not part of the city. And we don't have representation. So it's important that we do have representation. We are citizens of Sherwood. We've been here a long time. So my ask really is from you all tonight. There is a lot for each of you to contemplate and reflect upon, just like there has been for us when we've sat and listened to all, all you had to say, too. Because it's a two-way street. It's communication, right? And there has been a gap in communication. So please, I will, please, please, please postpone your decision tonight. Give all the interested parties the ability to continue to talk, to come up with some positive resolutions on, for April 17th. That would be my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
And I know, I'm long-winded, Keith.
Rich Vile? Are you wanting to talk on this? You've mentioned that metro policy is your thing.
Well, we don't have another citizen comment period, so come on up. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you very much.
Representative.
Mayor Mays, Council President Garland, members of the council. Rich Vile, State Representative, House District 26. I live up in Shoals and I'm here tonight in my capacity as both the state representative for our district and as the planning commissioner. I'm the chair of the planning commission in Washington County still. I have some concerns about Sherwood not doing an ask at this time and the effect that that would have on us regionally. It's no secret, I think, to any of you that I have become increasingly frustrated with Metro. It is clear that Metro's approach to smart growth has resulted in Portland Metro area going from being in the top 10 most affordable jurisdictions in the country to the least affordable jurisdiction in the country in less than 20 years. That, I believe, is a result of the way that we have failed at Metro to properly anticipate our growth and to plan for that growth. However, Metro is who we're dealing with today and we're stuck with them. So what happens if we don't make an ask? It just so happens that all five of the jurisdictions that are making asks are in my house district, every single one of them. And so I'm looking at the ripple effect here. If Sherwood backs off and makes no ask whatsoever, there will be growth in the region without question. We aren't going to be able to dodge it. And Metro's going to be under that much more pressure to either jam higher densities or more land into other areas if they choose not to require Sherwood to grow. I really appreciated Professor Milner being here because he made the point that I also wanted to make, which is, we may not have a choice. Sherwood may get stuck with an urban growth boundary expansion whether we ask for it or not. And if we ask for it, we are much more likely to have the ability to effectively control and work with Metro with respect to densities and other issues relative to that ask. I, I do not typically take a negative approach to things. I hope that, for those who know me, that you'll know that I try to be as positive as possible. But in this particular circumstance, I'm not optimistic about the benefits that would come to us from Metro if we chose to back out of the process at this time. So I'm urging you to consider not only the effect on Sherwood, but the effect on the entire region. You know that I'm trying to get roads built. You know that I'm trying to make sure that we have reasonable transportation in and out of Washington County and particularly Sherwood. If we do not, if we take the position with Metro that we are not ready to expand at this time, I can tell you that the regional transportation policies will be affected by that ask. We can't afford to let Metro adopt the narrative that Sherwood doesn't need this, that Sherwood isn't going to grow, that Sherwood doesn't have to deal with its transportation policies. I urge you to consider those things that have been brought to you by your planners and it would be my suggestion that we at least make some kind of ask in this current round. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Jeff.
Jeff Roberts, thank you. 15373 Southwest Sunset Boulevard, Sherwood, Oregon. I wasn't planning to testify until a few hours ago and wrote down a few things, but thought I'd speak from the heart. Tonight, the real focus, because next week is supposed to be what everybody's been planning for, tonight was the emergency meeting. And I was curious, in the last year, how many emergency meetings have been called? Two? I mean, I'm thinking YMCA, I'm thinking, I don't know how many. But it surprised me that after this whole process, and I work in real estate, Keith, I remember going to URA meetings with you 10 years ago, maybe more? All this buildup, all these years of planning and money and time and away from my kids, four, four kids, three, two in high school and two more are going to be, three of which will go to the new high school. But there's all this buildup to plan for the future, to plan and have opportunity so that my kids can afford to live here. Not everybody gets to live exactly where they want to. Most people don't. You make some considerations for time or money or your situation or where you work or, or what you can afford or view or whatever. When we limit that, not only do we limit in what we say to our community, our future people and our kids, but also, as was pointed out by Mr. Milner, Mr. Vile, to our greater community and to our region and what we are as a partner. We've banged the drum for how many years about? We need businesses here, we need commercial here. And we have expansion area that hasn't been developed. Why? I've heard a lot of things that it's tough to build here from people in the, in the business district. It's hard to, to get a business here. It's unfriendly. I hear the people talking about Brookman and bringing that up and banging that drum. Well, it doesn't matter. Even if a developer might buy land, which in this case owns a lot of the land down there, it hasn't been developed. And so to, to make predictions, that smacks to me of, of a little pomposity. We can plan for opportunity. We can provide opportunity, but you and I might not be here in five years or 10 years. Nobody knows. And so by providing opportunity for the future, doesn't mean that there will be a million houses there. And that's fear mongering and that bothers me because I'm in this business and I know how many factors there are. It could be that there is an annexation policy. It could be that there, the land isn't in. It could be that a developer runs out of money or has too many projects and does something else. And so there's all these factors pushing. How do you plan for that if you're a community member, inside or outside the city? How do you plan for that for schools? It bothers me that the school who was at a lot of, almost every Sherwood West meeting, because I went to all of them, sat at the table, then were, was to, to in some ways hijack that. And I'm getting a little personal and I get that. But it bothers me, it bothers me that one member of the community, that is going after their own benefit, which they should, but also weigh just as important my voice and other people's voices in this community as a whole, to provide a standard of living. I work in development. Most of you, since you live in the city limits, probably live in a development. You probably live in a house that a developer built some infrastructure, bet the silverware that they could hopefully make some money on the end after everything happened. I'll, I'll, I'll leave with a saying and, and people who know me, I don't use strong language, I'm not going to. I met a lady over in Wilsonville, was talking to her about her land, and she said, "It's no longer nimby." I said, "Really?" She said, "Yeah, it's igmui." And I, like you, said, "What's that?" She said, "It's I got mine, up yours." And sometimes it feels like that, when someone comes in late in the game, gets theirs, and pulls up the rope. Please give us the time for next week. Please consider emergency meetings a true emergency. And please consider all the voices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Welcome, Nancy.
Nancy Taylor, Sherwood City Limits. I'm looking at all of you up there and I don't, I think maybe one of you was, was here when we were talking about Brookman and the annexation and three times the city basically voted it down. During one of those meetings, very interesting thing came out, and that was the representative from Portland State came to talk about what was going to happen if we didn't annex Brookman. And basically, the school was going to fall apart, it was going to go bankrupt. And this is all in testimony, if you want to go back a few years. And so today, I read on the city website that, well, the story's completely changed. Now we can't annex land because, or we can't put land into the, the city because it's going to ruin the school. So I don't know which story's true. And I just thought I'd bring that up because some of us have very short memories as to what happened last week, what happened three weeks ago. And this was in, within the last three years. So one of you at least was here then. That's it.
Thank you, Nancy. Welcome, Paul.
Mayor Mays, members of council, for the record, Paul Grove, 15555 Bangy Road, Lake Oswego, with the Portland Metro Home Building Association. Appreciate the time. I will be brief. I know there are a lot of folks that want to talk. I know you have matters before you. And frankly, I had scratched out some remarks that I had wanted to give, but... but I don't think I could say anything, I think, as academically inclined as Professor Milner, as politically, I think, nuanced and focused as Rep. Vile, or as cogent and, I think, emotionally real as the gentleman that just testified in terms of what we're looking at in terms of the policy. So I will say this. We are here tonight in the spirit of partnership. And I have chatted with a few of you. And we are here, I think, extending a hand to have the conversation in advance of the 17th, to be a facilitator with the city, with the school district, and other elected officials as appropriate, whether it be from Metro, Washington County, or frankly, the state representative. You've heard a number of very strong arguments, and I don't want to rehash those. But I do believe that as we're in this conversation together, as we look at housing and land use policy together, it truly is a partnership. As Representative Vile noted, there are ripple effects that occur if a municipality takes an action or elects not to take an action. There are downstream impacts to the region as a whole, to our housing supply and everything that goes from there. So, again, we are here in the spirit of partnership to ask that no action be taken tonight, that we convene a meeting of the principals. I understand that council is inclined or wants to repair a relationship. I certainly respect that, I fully appreciate that. But I think part of helping repair a fractured relationship is actually having the principals in the room and have a robust conversation around what this really means. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I wanted to give a quick plug to Julia and staff because they have done a tireless, tireless effort in terms of the presentations, the work, the meetings. And that should not go unnoticed to people in this room and at council. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Dave Page? Welcome, Dave.
Dave Page, 19625 Kruger. Before that, I did live in the city limits in Woodhaven area for many years. And while I'm technically not a resident of the city, I consider myself one still. I sent most of you, I think all of you, an email earlier that I will spare you reading the entire thing. I just wanted to touch on a couple of points. First of all, I agree with Representative Vile and Professor Milner. This is definitely a regional issue. This isn't something we get to pretend is only a Sherwood issue. Certainly, if you live up on Kruger Road, if you live in that area and you've seen how backed up Elworth gets, a lot of that traffic's heading to Newburgh. I'm not here to bash Newburgh, I'm just saying. I mean, this is not, we don't get to pretend this is only our thing. And if we don't fix some of those infrastructure issues properly, then we're going to regret it. And if we do whatever fix will work for the next just three years, we're going to regret it. And this, in case this isn't clear, this is an argument for allowing some growth to take place because that's how you're going to get the tax money to get it right. And I'm especially stumped by the school board's argument. I wasn't here at that meeting, so perhaps I misunderstand their argument. But if they're planning on building that campus and spending that much money on that campus, and if they're planning on it not being suitable for growth, then that's a huge mistake. And if they're planning on it not being suitable for growth, it's not going to be suitable for growth the next time the metro cycle comes around. So I think we need to go back to the school board and say, "Why aren't you planning on a school system that's growing? Do you really think it's never going to?" So I think, to me, that's the weirdest argument I've heard yet. The other one that I think is suspect for me is that somehow we will lose control of this growth if UGB expands. I have been in a lot of the meetings about the planning. I think the planning department is doing a great job, they seem to be very involved. I think there's been quite a bit of community involvement, and I think there's been quite a bit of planning. And I suspect they intend to remain involved in how expansion gets done. I don't think you or the planning department intend to give up control over how planning, of how this expansion gets done if the UGB gets expanded. So I find that argument also a little bit suspect. So anyway, those are my main points. I would like to, if I could, just-
That'd be great.
...the email is sent in directly.
Thank you, Dave. John Kearney? Welcome, John.
Excuse me. My name is John Kearney. I live at 2508 Northeast 24th Avenue in Portland, 97212. I'm a principal real estate broker at U Realty, and I represent the Schmidt and Kristen families whose homes are in contract with Venture Properties. I support Sherwood's application for UGB expansion in 2018. You may vote tonight to withdraw the letter of interest to the city that the city sent to Metro for expanding the UGB into Sherwood West. I feel it's rushing into this vote without allowing for enough time for the public to comment on it with you individually. Tonight's meeting, there is some discourse, but it's four-minute little individual pockets under the threat of having that vote taken tonight. So it's not really an organic, more fully discoursed discussion. We've heard it tonight, expansion doesn't mean that hundreds of homes will suddenly overwhelm the roads, the schools, the sewers. There's going to be plenty of time to plan. The UGB expansion meeting in October or November, they had a PowerPoint that said it was going to take six to eight years for any homes to get built. On Metro's website, it says more like 10 years. So there will be a lot of time to plan for that. In the past four years since 2014, a lot of hard work has been done. And I feel that you should submit the application now and control the pace of development, like other people have talked about. Waiting will have its own issues. In 2021, there's either going to be a 900 or 1,000 acre limit on the entire metro expansion. Waiting until 2024 means that those homes won't even start to get built until 2030. That'll be 12 years into your housing, into your 20-year period. There is a long-term housing shortage predicted for Sherwood. The housing needs analysis in December, so there'll be 497 homes in the next 20 years. And that's if Sherwood's annual growth is limited to 0.8%. That's also if all the vacant and underserved properties inside the city limits now get developed. It's also if everything in Brookman gets developed. And that's a whole lot of ifs. Part of the housing deficit can be addressed at the Schmidt and Kristen farms. They're a combined 15 acres. Those farms already abut the city at Oregon Trail. They're already served by sidewalks, traffic controls, and other visible infrastructure. Sewer and water easily located in the street right out in front of them. And the UGB expansion report indicated the keeping Sherwood affordable means making sure that there's a reasonable supply of housing available. These farms would allow for 60 to 90 homes to be built. If the higher numbers use, is used, that would mean that more affordable homes would go in on smaller lots. We're not talking postage stamp lots where your neighbor, you can shake your neighbor's hand from your window. We're talking 4,000-foot lots that are a normal lot. Those would fill in what the letter of interest called "the missing middle." Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would urge you to postpone the vote until everyone has its chance to meet with you individually or until some of the key players can get together and talk about the bigger issues. If you do consider a vote, or if you do consider pushing back the vote, I would consider bringing in at least the Schmidt and Kristen properties along with the school property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. That's the last form of interest. Gene? If you can, yeah, that'd be fine. And then if anyone else is interested after Gene, please grab a form. Welcome, Gene.
You, Dean Stewart, I own property in Sherwood. I've been in Sherwood most of my life, since about 1946. Seen a lot of things go on. And one of the things that has always been noticeable is, I guess what we refer to now as urban sprawl. Where you live here and you work outside of the area, adding to all the congestion that we see out there. And it's getting worse and worse. The state evidently has no money that they can afford to improve it. Or at least Metro has taken the position, some meetings back, that we were not going to build any more freeways, that they're bad and evil. Well, there really aren't, if you want to move traffic around. But if you want to have a roadblock all the time, just keep it up. If you expand without planning, I don't think our planning department has done that great a job in getting transportation system up to snuff. That's what you need. And now I work up on Barber. Used to be about 20 minutes, now it's 45 minutes. I used to live right across the street. My dad worked at PGE Station L, which is the Humsey now. And when the freeways went in, and there used to be seven miles an hour, not so much traffic, he had one stop sign between here and when he got off the freeway to go to work, it took him 15, 20 minutes. I dare anybody to say that they can do that now. Metro is planning, or Trimet Max Line, you're going to be able to go from Towalton to downtown Portland in 30 minutes on Max. What they fail to tailor you is that if they take one lane of Barber or two lanes of Barber off, you're going to see worse jams than what you've seen right now. I live off Chapman Road now. And two weeks ago, for a whole week, traffic was backed up from Sunset all the way back to Brookman and Chapman. And it's headed that way. And it's going to get worse before it gets better. And there's no plans on how to move traffic around. So you keep adding people. Plus, on the new Max Line, they say by 2035, they're going to handle, carry 43,000 people a day. Where in the heck are they going to park to get onto it? I mean, Bridgeport, where do you see any place in Bridgeport that'll handle 5,000 cars to park so they can get on Max, go to work? Anywhere along there. I don't know what they're smoking at this point, but they don't seem to be understanding. So like I say, is that our economic development is very important. And I don't know what the ratio is, but the original plan was to try to go 60-40. So people who lived in Sherwood, could work in Sherwood, they wouldn't have to spend an hour, hour and a half on the road. And we're not getting close to that, we're getting worse again. And where your property taxes on residents is what? 125% of their taxes goes for services? Where's the extra 25% come from? It comes from your commercial. And if you don't build up your commercial, you can't build other things. So I would think that this needs a lot of study before you do an ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Anyone else? Two, whoever. Just need you to fill out a form before you go. Before you go, will, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Kurhara, and I live at 10868 Southwest Westfall Court in Towalton. I own property in the Sherwood West area. And I was part of the Sherwood West Action Committee or Community Committee. So I've been around and heard all the arguments and all this. But from a job standpoint, I'm a loan officer, so I'm very familiar with affordability and that being an issue. So when I look at, and I'm going to be anecdotal on this because I wasn't planning on testifying. So when I look at what real estate has done and what interest rates have done and what the population is doing, we have a mess. Because right now, we're just coming out of, you know, record lows where rates were down in the 3% range. Real estate is climbing because there are, and the numbers I've heard is there's supposed to be 400,000 people moved to the metro area over the next 10 years. And our property values are still cheap compared to areas like California. So people are coming here, even though we think it's expensive, it relatively is cheap when you look at other people. So people are coming. From a traffic standpoint, other areas are going to be developing and growing. So people are still going to be cutting through Sherwood. So the traffic issue is not going to go away just because we don't develop. From an affordability standpoint, there's two things that impact what it costs to afford a home. It's the price of the home. And right now, I just did a search standing in the back of the room. There's one home in Sherwood under 400,000 that's a detached, single-family home. I remember when I was, you know, 10 years ago, walking through a neighborhood and seeing homes that were 400,000, going, "There's no way I'm ever going to be able to afford something." That's a starter home, that's 1,500 square feet. In Sherwood is going for that. Now, rates were at 3.5%, that makes the payment X. As rates are climbing, and now we're pushing 5%, so rates have gone up over the last year 30%. The affordability and what someone can afford has just gone down. Because you have a median household income in the area, and I believe it's somewhere around 80,000. If 25, 30, 35, 40% of my income has to go to my house payment, it makes it hard for any family to want to move and live in an area like Sherwood because they just get priced out. From a personal investment in real estate, I've had several pieces of property that I've invested. And I can count three properties that I've had for 20 years, had for 20 years. And in those three properties, the appreciation in the values have gone up over a million bucks. I had a 1,000-square-foot condo in Towalton that I sold in 2005. That same condo just sold for 240,000. It's a 1,000-square-foot condo. And so you talk about young families wanting to move the area that's going to fill up these schools. No one's going to move into, around the high school, into a $600,000 home that has a bunch of kids. People that have kids are young professionals, young people that are moving in, and they won't be able to afford to live in Sherwood. So the population, and what I see is going to happen for the schools is the population in schools is going to go down. And you need to build affordable housing where people can afford to live and grow and help keep Sherwood viable.
Thank you very much. Please don't forget the form. I appreciate that.
My name is Al Jek. I am with Venture Properties, it's located at 4230 Galewood in Lake Oswego. And Kelly Ritz spoke earlier about the fact that we have probably three or four years ago developed, started developing the Mandel Farm subdivision. And our homebuilding company, Stonebridge, has been building in there ever since. It's been a very successful subdivision for that reason. We began looking in Sherwood West a couple of years ago. And I sent out letters, made a number of contacts with landowners. And at this point, I probably have regular conversations with 15 or 20 owners in that area. And as a part of that process, I made it a point to kind of immerse myself in this UGB expansion situation. And I attended all the metro meetings that led up to this mid-cycle legislation that was passed last year. I've attended all the school board meetings on the new school and several city council meetings and anything that had to do with this, just to try and understand how this process is going to work. So I want to focus in on one thing in your resolution. And the point's already been made tonight, but let me just kind of hammer it home. And that is that the city understands there will be an opportunity to make a mid-cycle request to expand the UGB in three years. And yes, that's true, there will be an opportunity to do that in three years. However, this is a much different and far more restrictive opportunity than what's before you right now. As you've heard, this is going to be limited to about 900 acres. And these are gross acres, not developable acres. So typically, you know, we may see that 50 to 70% of the land is all you can yield from a gross acreage number. So the 900 acres is in reality going to be something far less. And even if it were 100% developable, those 900 acres would represent about three months' worth of building permit issuances in the Portland regional market right now. So that's not a lot of land coming in. So that's not a lot of land coming in. And I think it's a pretty safe bet that when that mid-cycle review comes along in three years, it's just going to be fiercely competitive. And you are not going to have the same opportunity that's before you right now as one of the five cities submitting to take advantage of that in the same way. So it could very well be six years before you see another opportunity like this again. And as has been pointed out tonight, that's, that's a long time. That could potentially mean 15 years before you begin to see housing from any of this. And I also want to point out that I think that strict, restricting the availability of land does not stop the in-migration and the growth of this community. I mean, there's already a land shortage here. I mean, as someone that's tasked with going out and trying to find that. And yet, from the school district's own numbers, there was a 9% increase in enrollment from 2016 to 2017, in spite of the fact that there, there isn't this availability of land in town. So I think it's very important for, for the city right now to take advantage of the opportunity that Metro has and expand the UGB. And I would, I would recommend doing that to the full extent in the letter of interest that was sent out in December. That still gives the city plenty of time to work with its community partners and plan for this growth. I mean, in all likelihood, it's going to be at least five years before any housing would be built there. And that's quite a bit of time to, to do the planning on this. But if you wait, you've just extended that out several more years, and you'll have no opportunity to deal with the growth. So that's it.
Thank you, Al. Okay, with that, we will close Citizen Comment on the proposed resolution. Council comments? The... I am supportive of the resolution. That shouldn't be news to anyone. I believe that, from the, I don't believe if we submitted an application, we'd get it, we'd get it blessed. We don't, we're not submitting something with density at levels that Metro wants. We have certainly, the property owners of Sherwood West are absolutely united in that they would like us to do this. But equally, I believe members of our community are not in support. We've gone through a few years of stress and turmoil in our community, of, of coming kind of butt in heads with community partners, community groups. And here's an opportunity for us to say, you know, we're going to turn over a new leaf and engage with our school district and plan for something together on this front and other fronts over the next three years. I believe that if we are, if we have the outreach and visioning that we need to do, and that there are, there is the interest of doing something in three years, we can be much ready, better prepared, we can have the comp plan updated, we could do the economic analysis that people have alluded to. We can put new zoning types in place. And if we put it in in three years, and if it's supported by Metro, the net loss in time wouldn't be that great because we need to do all those things if we submitted asking today. And, or next week. The school district is aware of the costs of, of delay with growth. I say delay because Sherwood will grow, Sherwood is growing, Sherwood will continue to grow. But they're, they're fully aware of those costs. It is possible for when growth occurs to recover some of those costs still. It is not, depending upon who you listen to, if, if we were to submit an, an ask to Metro today, this month, and it was supported by Metro, folks have said, you know, dirt could be turning in four years, five years, 10 years. Whenever development occurs, there are mechanisms in place to support the school district for them to recover some of their costs initially, that they could recover on the back end for future things. And we did that by the Ridge Schools when we did, when we did that. And we could, if the council is supportive, they can do that again in the future. So I think it's important collectively for us to respect our partner and members of the community that have been very vocal to me, and certainly to most everyone here, the value of, of a pause and the opportunity that, that can give us. And we can take steps to rebuild our city's relationship with our most important partner, which is our school district. Other thoughts?
I have some thoughts.
Yep.
So I think this is a tough decision. I've met with many of you, landowners or developers out in that community, and I, and I understand the perspective that you guys present. I took the time over the weekend yet again to look through the Sherwood West preliminary concept plan in detail. And I wasn't on council when that process was taking place. So that's the document that I have to, to guide me. And, you know, this was a 50-year plan, there was no, nothing in there that said when the expansion would begin. And there was a comment about it could happen quickly, it could happen more slowly, and in the end, not, maybe not even all the 1,291 acres would ever be brought into our, into our city. Multiple places throughout that document, it mentions how great our schools are. So I think that's an important aspect of that. At the end of the plan, it had some recommended actions. And one of those was our comprehensive plan update, which we are just now beginning the process of that. And I think, you know, it's probably a year to two years away from being complete. And I think that's an important thing that we need to get done. It also says we need our housing needs and analysis. Which, like our planning commissioner chair said, felt like it was rushed through, and the planning commission had a lot of concerns. And we haven't, as a council, had an opportunity to possibly have a work session with the planning commission to discuss those concerns and get, get that approved. It also says one of the recommended actions is to work closely with the school district to assess school capacity and demand in order to identify facility needs. This is probably a conversation that should have been happening since this plan in December 2015. It's a plan that needs to start happening because if we don't go through with this ask now, we will in the future, Sherwood's going to grow, I think we all acknowledge that. There's nobody up here, I don't think, that says we don't want to grow, we acknowledge it, it's going to grow. But that conversation with that partner needs to take place. I think the school district acknowledges that Sherwood West is going to be part of their enrollment at some period, but they did not include that in their 10-year projection back in April of 2016. But they did have a note that it was probably a ways off, like seven-plus years. So they, they do understand that it needs to be planned for at some point. There were some comments, I think, at our last meeting by a couple people, let's not waste the work that's been done by our staff. They've put a lot of work into this, and, and they really have. But that work's not wasted, that work will continue, that work will be useful the next time we ask. It will still be there, it's not going, it's not going to change. So I think we are following the plan. It, it just needs, the timing is just not right, I don't think.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? Councillor Bros?
I've been doing a lot of sifting through this whole conversation, and this whole topic as well, and trying to put on different lenses of populations and partnerships and groups within our community to formalize a, an opinion or a pathway going forward. And I've also learned along the way to listen to my gut. And my gut right now is telling me, tonight is not the night to make this decision. I think we need to wait for our meeting on the 17th, which was what the original meeting was, to allow maybe some more discussion to take place. I get, and I understand the need that this, our partner, the school district, has. We have other partners in the community too, and many of them are, are out here in the audience. I think through the council retreat this past weekend, and the mission statement that we crafted, and the for-all component. And so that's weighing heavily on my mind too. Right now, the, the way Sherwood is growing, and the, the big houses, it's, it's not a for-all community. If we bring the UGB into, in now, doesn't necessarily mean that we can't take the time to plan, like everybody's saying to plan. I had these notes all written down, so it was actually some flow of consciousness. And I left them at home. So forgive the ramblings, but I guess my, again, going back to my gut, I, I don't think we should make the decision tonight.
Other councillor?
Yeah, Keith. Yeah, just a couple things, just to echo what Keith and, and Kim said. You know, when, when I think about this problem, early on in the process, I got concerned about our schools. And I had multiple meetings with school board members, trying to understand what the impact was. Because, you know, if with option A, and you look at 3,100 homes, and, you know, even, even with the reduced per student factor in high-density housing and a 50-50 mix of, you know, single-family detached, we're still looking at, you know, 1,500 to 2,000 new students in our schools in the next 10 to 12 years, 10 to 15 years, depending on when that growth occurs. And the 2016 bond measure the school passed with 247 million, we all remember voting for that, because that raised my taxes, I don't know about the rest of you, only provided for 2,000 additional more students in our school system. When they did the Davis Study, which was their 10-year population growth study, they didn't, they didn't contemplate in that study Sherwood West. They looked at all the other areas, they looked at Brookman, they even looked at Passau Flats over in the, near Towalton, which is part of the school district. And, but they didn't, they didn't include Sherwood West for a lot of the reasons that councillor Young talked about. That, at that time, it was felt it was a lot farther out. So even if, you don't see roofs starting to be built out there till two, for six years, or even eight years, depending on the economic cycles, if you go back and look, you know, when we've had a lot of supply and a good economy, we've been building 400 to 500 homes a year in this community. So we do have the potential to grow fast, depending on what the economic cycle looks like. So I think where the school district's coming from is they're not prepared. You know, they've, they're already accounted, they're already looking at 1,000 more students without Sherwood West in the next 10 years, in their 10-year plan. And this will put them over the top, and we'll be right back in overcrowded situation. And I want to add more, one more thing on that, in my research on this. The schools are basically, the way they're funded, their operational costs come from the state on a per-student basis, but their, all their capital construction costs come from more or less bond measures. And there are limitations on what the school can go out and get. There's a state law that says the schools, their total in debt, the total amount of debt they can carry is 7.95% of the real market values of the homes in their area. They're at 70% of that right now, when they pass that $247 million bond. So their ability to even go out for another bond, to build a new school, even if we're not going to see new students into that school till 2025, 2026, you know, they have to be four years ahead of that, they're looking at going out for a bond in 2020, 2022. And they don't even have the capacity right now. So we, and, and this brings up a bigger issue for me that I wanted to speak to a little bit about. There's a big disconnect right now in how, in Oregon, how we plan for land use planning, and how we plan for school growth. There's, there's no connection between those two things. In fact, once it's in the urban growth boundary, once it becomes a land use decision, there are some laws that are interpreted as saying we're barred from considering school capacity when we go, when we make a land use decision. So it's very important to me that our partners are behind us on this. And, and, you know, there's been a lot of debate over why we didn't talk sooner, you know, what happened, how did we get here? But it is what it is today. So at the end of the day, for me, it's about the students. And, and making sure our, our kids have a school to go to that they can work with. Just a couple other quick things, I want to echo what councillor Young said. The Sherwood West planning effort is not wasted. To her point, in a lot of ways, we're actually kind of following the recommendations of that. And all of that can be built on with a planning process and our, and our comprehensive plan update that we're going through right now. I would add, as one vote on this council, that we should consider on top of that doing a community-wide visioning process, not just around planning and zoning and growth, but around how does that all work together with the rest of our city, and our arts, and parks, and all the different things, and how does that all come together? What does our community want? And I would add, this would give us some time to go off and do that process as well. Last thing. A lot of, you know, a lot of folks are here, you know, that are, that live out in the Sherwood West area. We have a lot of companies represented, and I, I understand and I empathize with why you're asking us for, to either delay or not do this request. But I, I just want to bring up that there are a lot of people in the city that are against this. I, in all of my talks with citizens and walking... I'm sorry? Well, I'm going to, I'm going to get there. I have...
Please. Thank you.
To be, to be fair, I have talked to a lot of people that are against it. We did an informal poll of 600 citizens, and, and 83% of those citizens wanted us to wait and do the planning correctly, and 85% thought the schools weren't going to be ready. So whether they're here or not, they deserve a voice. And so I'm just bringing that up. And I think that's it, yeah, for my comments.
Like councillor president?
I suppose I should say a few words. So most of the people who know me, or have seen me operate up on this dais, know that I tend to try and stay fairly calm and keep my emotions in check, and I'm going to do that tonight. But I am frustrated with this process. I'm frustrated that we're in this position tonight. We had a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, and I think due to actions from the school board, we're now here tonight to push the conversation. And I'm frustrated with the way that the process has worked. We talk, and I talk very much about wanting to get as much information as possible before making a decision, talking to the interested parties. I haven't personally spoken with anybody on the school board, and that's frustrating for me to be in this position to make a decision of this magnitude without having a conversation with the school board. I've heard and I've read their letter, and I understand what their, what their point is. But I'm not happy with the way that this has gone. I have also, you know, as Tim had mentioned, there's a lot of our citizens who are against growth, and I respect the views of their citizens, and I'll probably lose a few friends by saying this. So I apologize in advance, citizens of Sherwood. But I think that there are some people who are not entirely educated on the matter of growth, how it works, what the UGB expansion is, and how to move forward. So while I respect that, I, I see too many comments on social media and hear from too many people who say, "What about zero growth?" Well, I'm sorry to be the guy who's going to say this to you, but that's not going to happen. We need to plan for the future. And we've done a lot of planning. Again, I will echo what has been said, Julia and our planning department, Joe, our city manager, everybody who has done as the citizen group that spent a lot of time putting it together, they have done some planning. So I, I do not want to dismiss that and say that there hasn't been any planning done, or not adequate planning done for this growth. So one of the other things I, I tend to do is I, before making a large decision, I do want to hear from everybody, and I want to get certain input from different groups. You know, we have a vocal group in Sherwood who is against the growth. We have a, a group tonight, and I've spoken with many of you independently, and heard your, your message as well about, you know, why you're in favor of the expansion. We received, at least I received some new information tonight in listening to Representative Vile speak, Professor Milner speak, some of the other people who've come to speak tonight. That is some very interesting and enlightening information that I really had not considered as heavily as I am now, after hearing that. So going back to what I just said about wanting to have all the information and really... So going back to what I just said about wanting to have all the information and really make an informed decision, I'd like to echo what Renee has said. And I do not feel comfortable tonight making any decision on tonight. And I would prefer that we wait until our regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday.
Anybody to go? I'll go. I feel, this has been such a difficult decision, you know, coming from the planning commission background and all that, all those eight years spent on planning commission. I don't feel like I'm indoctrinated. I don't feel like I like planning only. I don't have those, those binders, those visors on. But I feel like, I felt, I want to echo what Sean said. I think maybe we aren't as educated about the concept of growth as we should be. And I think, I want to echo what he said about, you know, the information brought to tonight's meeting by our representative and, and by those people who care enough to show up to this meeting. I, I read the letter that the school district sent and I absolutely appreciate their position. I absolutely appreciate what they're all about. I think they're wonderful. It would have been nice if someone from the school board had come to this meeting tonight and testified before us. And I don't see them. And that disappoints me. You know, I was hoping they would. We have the letter, we know what they want. But I feel like councillor Bros and councillor Gardner, I think we are rushing this. I think that in light of new information that was brought tonight that I was not aware of, I think we understood that when we plan or don't plan, we expand, we don't plan. That affects our neighbors, it affects, you know, everything regionally. But I think what, what Representative Vial said tonight, I think was very informational, very valid. I am absolutely pro-school. I love our schools. My, all my kids have gone through the school system. I love the city of Sherwood. I want it to still be a viable place to live. But I don't always think, I don't always think we, we can't put our head in the sand. And unfortunately, because of, because of former non-relationships between the city and the school district, we weren't very good at communicating with each other the past eight years or so. And that has led to this deficit of understanding between our two groups. Now luckily, luckily, our city manager has been in constant contact with the school district and they've kept up on those kinds of things. But as a body of individuals representing the city, we have really not had a relationship with the school board. And they are our biggest partner in the district. So we, except for, except for our help at the planning level to help them get through this as quickly as we could to help them expedite this process, we absolutely did that because they needed our help. And so we absolutely helped them. We were kind of outside of, of this process. And I feel like I echo what my fellow councillors said. I think we should wait. I think we should wait till next week. That's maybe not the most popular decision, but I think it's the right thing to do. There's my piece.
Thanks councillor.
I don't usually have a script. I just make up my thoughts as they come along. But I will say, wow, what a lot of great experienced people we have in the room right now, listening to so many people. Representative Vial, thank you for your comments. Jean Simpson, our chair for the planning commission, thank you. Mr. Milner, thank you. And most of all, thank you to Julia and Carrie for so much work that you've done. Joe, for helping them carry the ball. It's, it's really an incredible process and it is a process. I'm sitting back and taking a 30,000-foot view and I wonder in the back of my mind where we would be if the school district hadn't decided to locate where they are. Would we even be talking about an urban growth boundary expansion? I don't know. I don't know. But it's just something to keep, to keep in mind. I, I think about, sometimes I think about the housing needs analysis. I think about to reflect or echo what councillor Griffin was saying about not having everyone being fully educated or maybe what councillor President Garland was saying, oh, not, not everyone is fully educated. Urban growth boundary is very complicated. I'm not so sure that all of us on city council, I'll speak for myself, it's a learning process. Even folks on planning commission, it's a learning process. Our community absolutely is a learning process. I heard a lot about predictions. I've heard a lot about partnerships tonight. There is also a partnership between you all out there and the folks that we have living inside the city limits. And I would like to see that communication between those two groups. We sit up on the dais a lot and we see a lot of different people coming to talk with us, but they're all missing each other like ships that pass in the night. There's never, very few times where there's actual real connection and things start to happen. I'll be honest with you, I came to the meeting tonight thinking that we would just move forward and not, not, I move forward with the ask. But I appreciate all of your comments and I am willing to wait a week to see what kind of conversations will come. I don't know that they'll change anything. I really don't. But I, I believe in having everyone's voices heard. But no matter what happens in this outcome, I will say this. Communication and purposeful movement forward is what we need. This doesn't end here, no matter what the outcome is. It doesn't end here. It has to be a start regardless of what happens with the UGB ask. There's a lot of work to be done, no matter what happens. And I hope that all of you out there will continue to be engaged, not just tonight, not just through the week as meetings are happening, not just after Tuesday, but continuing forward as our city continues to grow. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Ask a question of staff. So what I learned of the meeting, I think it was Thursday and I ran into councillor, city manager Gall. And he was letting me know of the, the meeting date and what he can acknowledge. One of my concerns was that it was a special meeting and that we were calling it kind of last minute. Because anybody that was following the YMCA deal, there was an emergency meeting called to rush a vote on a contract. And I was opposed to that. People didn't have time to be heard. And I think, I think that is, is important. So my question is, one of the, one of the reasons for this resolution tonight was that if council looked like we weren't going to go through with the ask, is that you could have your staff stop working on this and not dedicate any more time to it. So if we delay this and go through to our meeting on the 17th, staff needs to prepare everything because that was the original night we were going to vote on the, the ask. And that's really the only date, right? Because we need to approve the housing needs and analysis. And that has to be done so many days in advance of the deadline. Can you explain that, Carrie?
The housing needs analysis needs to be adopted and have its 21-day, 20-day appeal period to the, the state. It's a planned amendment. So that would need to be decided on the 17th. The deadline for submission to Metro is not till May 31st. So the city council can decide at any point between now and, and into May whether to go forward with the ask. But the housing needs analysis would need to be decided on.
Because that can't be pushed back till May 6th because that's not enough time. And that was the concern is we, there were some concerns about the housing needs analysis, about whether we were going to prove that if we weren't going to go through with the UGB ask. So we ended up combining the two and putting all that work on you guys. So as one who advocates for having all the voices heard, and I keep hearing of a possible meeting that some parties want to have, I don't know if that can take place in the next six days, seven days, whatever it is, eight days. But if it can happen, I don't know that it will change the outcome, but we, we should be listening. So I would probably be okay with waiting till the 17th.
Okay. Then if there's no other comments, I would suggest we continue Resolution 2018-034 to next Tuesday's meeting agenda.
So just for clarity, just so we're not surprised next week when you see an agenda, is the intent of council to have two items on the agenda? This item on the agenda and the original smaller UGB ask that staff will start tomorrow to continue to put together to meet those deadlines? Is that the intent to have both items on your agenda for consideration next week? Or is it more a thumbs up or thumbs down on the UGB ask?
Well, if it ends up being a thumbs up on the UGB ask, then we need to have the housing needs analysis available and the.
And the ask size.
And the ask.
I think we kind of.
So yeah, it's kind of.
Option A, didn't we?
So just for clarification, the housing needs analysis, we already have prepared for the packet because that has already been scheduled. You know, you had your first hearing, you delayed the second hearing to the April 17th. So that would come before you on the 17th regardless. I think the question is whether or not it's just the smaller ask that we received general direction at the work session to bring forward or the smaller ask plus this resolution to delay, which I.
Which really doesn't make sense. I mean, I guess my, and that's why I'm raising the question, just so there's no surprises for anybody in the room or anyone watching in terms of what you, because mayor, you said we tabled this item. So I guess I'm raising the question, instead of tabling this item, basically it's preparing the UGB ask, which was the smaller ask and having the housing needs analysis, which was the original plan anyway, before the school district kind of changed the discussion by their action and just voting on that.
Well, yeah, because I guess if that ended up being voted down, in a sense, we would be withdrawing our letter.
Then there's no need for this resolution.
Right.
Because you basically have stopped the process because you won't ask.
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
We can do it multiple ways, so.
No, I don't think you need to take any action on this at all.
There is another option, which would be to do what Mayor May's originally suggested, postpone this to next week and postpone the UGB ask until another date in May. If.
May 1st.
Yeah, whatever that date is. So that we would vote on the housing needs analysis and then whatever this resolution.
Julia, are you bumping up any?
Yeah, order-wise, I would recommend doing this resolution before the housing needs analysis because if you choose to stop the process, that will inform what you decide, may inform what you decide to do on the housing needs analysis. And then yes, delay the, Carrie's like, yes, please. Delay preparing the packet for the UGB ask to May. So then if you don't pass this resolution and do approve the housing needs analysis, then we will have for you an ask for the smaller UGB ask for your direction for you to ultimately decide in May, yes or no.
So if we carry this resolution over till next week, that's almost kind of a check-in for you guys. But what do we think one week later?
It's another way of doing it, so. That's why I raised the issue just for discussion purposes. So my question, if we bring, if we go this path, is it the May 1st council meeting? That is the likely date for a decision versus May 15th?
I would always recommend sooner rather than later because then you have time to tweak things. Do you have any issues or questions?
I mean, I'll echo you that the May 1st, we can bring up if there continues to be issues. May 15th is still acceptable.
Okay. So we'll target May 1st.
Are we all here, May 1st and everything? I mean, just to make sure that we're crossing those D's.
Maybe not aware of anyone being gone in May, so.
So just to make sure I understand, I apologize. If we go to the May 1st date, that would assume we're approving the housing needs analysis in the next meeting. Correct, so.
So there's two, right, there's two steps. So in theory, as we hear everyone speak, we would, would continue this resolution next week. It would be, it would happen before any action on the second reading of the housing needs analysis. And if this resolution was adopted next week, then there would be no action on the housing needs analysis so that the planning commission could better understand that whole thing because they're certainly confused based on their comments last week and before. But if this resolution did not pass next week, then the housing needs analysis would need to be submitted in one form or another to continue the process to consider a UGB ask in May.
Which was your concern at the last meeting, right? Councillor Rosner, about approving the housing needs and analysis in advance of, of the ask? Because if we weren't going to do the ask, we didn't necessarily need the housing needs analysis right now.
Yeah, based on the testimony of some of the folks on our planning commission, if that was the case, ideally, we would do the housing needs analysis in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update as opposed to committing to it before we get to that process.
Yep.
Mayor and council, I think we have a pretty clear path in terms of steps. I mean, there's going to be steps in this process, so. So we'll table this resolution until next week. We'll do the order of agenda to do this first, then the HNA. And then if both pass next week, we'll be back in May with the official ask.
Only if the resolution doesn't pass.
If the resolution doesn't pass, that's right. Sorry.
Correct.
Any other, we're not going to do citizen comment or, I mean, council, council comment.
And just, just for clarity, this, this, I know I'm going to say something that seems technical. This was a special meeting, which is unique. It was not an emergency meeting. Emergency meetings are usually 24 hours or less in advance. They rarely happen. In six years that I've been here, we've never had an emergency meeting. We've had special meetings, which are usually called quicker. So just a point of clarity, just because some people talked about that today, so.
Appreciate that, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We're adjourned.